Good morning. Welcome to the October 16th, 2019 work session of the Marion County School Board at 9:30 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. I now ask the school board attorney to explain the rules for the board meeting.
Good morning. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the board has adopted uniformed meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form and hand it to the school board secretary. After the board and superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the secretary will call speakers' names in the order received. At the podium, speakers are asked to state their full name and address and dispel their last names. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these rules.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. We will now begin the work session with the superintendent's administrative briefing.
Nothing today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will be discussing strategic plan goals with Dr. Grantham.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So, this is it, we hope. This is the final piece of the strategic plan. If you remember, Rhonda took notes. We went through and made everything. There's a few pieces we'll talk about as we go. We have all the people of these goals here as we go. We've done, we have, I just want to draw your attention to the first thing. At the very last, in the very last page of your packet is Appendix A. That is the clean version that we can look at. Ms. King, you requested to have the state up there so you see that goal. Ms. McCall, you see that? So, Ms. Stacy, what we did was we simply went through and said, "This is our goal," and we put an "N" or a "Y." Did we meet the goal? No. Did we meet the goal? Yes. So, we did it all the way down for each goal. So, that is the appendix that has everything in one place. So, if you want to refer back to that, you can. But we did put the state goal as we go through. So, I'm going to go through this again, Goal One, and we're hoping that after this conversation, we're ready to get board approval for the 1920 Strategic Plan. And then I believe it is the wish of the board to have this done annually. So, it's not going to be a five-year, it's going to be annual. So, Elena asked me a few minutes ago, "When do we want to have the first work session on the," and this is a little crazy, "the 2021 Strategic Plan?" We're going to do it in July for a work session. That way, we can have all the data back from the state. The statute says you have to have it back before July 1st, just to be cautious. We're going to say in July. Okay? So, we'll start with Goal One. There's a lot of terminology, but I want you to look at Page Three. And so, what we have here, Dennis and David and John, they all have their stuff here to say, "This is what we did in 2018-19." So, this is safe schools, respectful schools for Goal One. We've done everything that we talked about. I don't know how specific you want me to go in this. I know I'm going to jump into the curriculum stuff pretty heavy again, but this is Goal One, and if we have questions, we have those folks here to help answer your questions for Goal One.
I do. So, for 1920, when I see right now, let's see, will be, the percentage of schools reported as unsafe or very unsafe by their teachers will be less than 50%. So, we were at 9%. So...
Yes, ma'am. Remember what you said, and I'll talk about that now if you want to. I asked Kieran and her team this morning to reach out to teachers. So, we're going to develop a teacher survey. Remember, we had some, we didn't believe the data was correct. So, and I asked her not to reach new teachers because new teachers don't know what they don't know yet. Veteran teachers that have been around for a while. So, we went 40 or 50 teachers to help us develop a survey that we're going to use a Survey Monkey for, and that's going to be one of the questions on there to get real data based off, and it's going to go to all the teachers in the district. So, that will be one of the questions on the survey, Ms. McCall. And I should have probably said that.
So, when we, so when we look at these referrals, that from 1718, we had 6,242. It went down significantly to 4,796. So, I guess the survey will show, do, I mean, is that a true number? And can we...
The number of the referrals we are encouraging, and this one's a little nuanced. Level-one referrals are typically very low types of behaviors, and typically, those types of behaviors should be handled within a classroom. Things like talking, inappropriate gestures, inappropriate, like touching, those types of things, that we're trying to work with schools to build in some consequences that teachers can implement on their own. And we shouldn't really be tying up the deans and the APDs with that type of behavior so that they can deal with the more major situations on campus. And that the big piece is empowering that teacher to own the low-level behavior in their classroom so that they're seen as the authority figure.
Okay. But let's... So, so keeping this as a 3% goal because of that proactive status right there should, is viable?
Yeah. I think we should continue to see a decline in referrals for that low level because that's the teacher that is really struggling with classroom management in most cases. That's why we didn't target Level Two and Level Three offenses. Those are things that the school administrator should be dealing with, things where kids have, you know, really disrupted the class in a major way. They're grossly insubordinate. They're doing major disruptions to the class. They need help for those. But for the kid that's throwing something, we shouldn't be doing a referral because all that's teaching the kid is that I can't handle the class as a teacher. And we need to work with our teachers and train our teachers, and our deans need to be proactive in that way, and then getting them some good things like lunch detentions and morning detentions that they can issue on their own to a kid so that they see that teacher as being in charge of the class.
Yeah, I understand that. So, my concern then, if we're saying, "Okay, Level Ones are the simple ones," I get that. But what about the Level Twos and Threes? Because I, and we've had discussion, that teachers have been told not to call the dean or things happen and they, I don't know, they may just come in and it's not addressed. And so, behavior keeps continuing, and the other students are not learning.
It's absolutely something we need to be dealing with, and that's part of the reason when we developed this survey, we need a breakout by school. Because doing these global discussions, it's sort of like telling your whole, you know, if you're a teacher, telling your whole class, "Behave." Well, you do that three or four times, and the good kids just start tuning you out. You need to figure out where our issues are, and we can deal with those staff, that situation individually. Because we have told teacher, our deans, our expectation, if a referral's written, it's processed in some way, shape, or form. And that may be if it's an inappropriate referral, you go down and talk to the teacher and explain the situation, and you action it the way you think's appropriate. But there needs to be a follow-up on every single referral. It's one of the things that was sort of an unintended consequence of PBIS in some of the state reporting that we did to PBIS in the model schools, is there was an artificial pressure, not intended, but an artificial pressure to decrease out-of-school suspensions, decrease. Well, as a principal, I could make my out-of-school suspensions zero if you wanted me to. If the board said, "We want no out-of-school suspensions," I'll do it. And it's fairly easy to manipulate that. But does it lend itself to a safe and orderly school environment? No, it doesn't. So, we've got to make sure we're balancing that, and that's why we're not going to write goals about decreasing Level Two and Three referrals.
Okay, so on our, when we have our little quick looks or, what are they called? Quick facts? Is that going to be listed on there so we can see it that way then?
I think we're reporting that. We have no plans to discontinue anything we're doing, and if you want other data, we can get that for you.
And on the quick fact sheet, the discipline data is listed by level.
Okay.
And let me ask a question on discipline. Do teachers still have to keep this log, like, okay, so the child's throwing paper, and that's one offense. Now, he went over here and he climbed under the table. That's another offense. So, he couldn't get sent to the office because he hadn't done three throwing papers. He's now changed his thing. But back when they were on PBS, they had to have, like, three offenses of the same thing. And then these teachers have these logs, right, Ms. King? Where they had...
The blue cards.
Yeah. Let me give you an example of an appropriate use of something like that and an inappropriate use. So, let's say, the examples you gave, like, let's say a kid was throwing paper. You've told him, you gave him, like, minor classroom consequence, a timeout. They did something else, pushed. Again, low level. And then finally, they were talking when they weren't supposed to. You'd warned him, whatever, and you gave the third consequence. To me, that's probably an appropriate, what we used to call "three to see me," that you're trying to deal with these low level in your class, but finally, you know what? You're not listening.
But then we don't have the old plan where they had to do the same offense three times, and then the, because the kids love how to...
That should not be in place.
Yeah, they just wouldn't do the same thing three times. They'd do it, y'all know what I'm talking about. It wasn't that...
I had a student, the first year I was at Lake Weir Middle School, that told me I could not send him to the office, me being the principal, because it was a new month and we, it was a...
Yeah, all that kind of stuff.
I haven't done "three to see me." I said, "Well, guess what? There is a new sheriff in town."
Yeah.
And it is "one to see me" right now.
Yeah.
We should not be doing that. And again, I think it wasn't intended, but I think that was some of the outcome of putting pressure on trying to reduce classroom referrals. If we're tracking that kind of information, it's a good piece of data, but it's information, and we should be acting on the information, not trying to deflate numbers so we can win awards.
Oh, I don't care about awards like that.
Exactly. I have a question about the discipline piece as well, and we're talking a lot about reactive strategies and consequences. And my question is, what are we doing and what are we going to do going forward to support the so many inexperienced teachers that we have that are teaching in our toughest classrooms?
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. We actually are in the process of teaming up with all of the departments. We're realizing that our teachers don't necessarily need the same level of professional development. So, the second week in November, I think November 13th, we have these symposiums planned for our teachers where we're not just going to own it as a department. We are reaching out to other departments to say, "Mr. Ellers, what, and based on your experience, what would a new teacher benefit that your department could give that expertise for?" So, they have two sessions planned for that night to address elementary and secondary, but we're realizing that the PD needs to be more targeted to their needs at that time, and they don't just need basic lesson planning and basic classroom management. So, that's already in the process for them to have choice, and we ideally would love them, for them to sit down with their principal or their mentor, which we call the ITD on campus, and say, "After this, these couple months of instruction, where do you feel like you need supports in place?" So, we have the building fully booked at MTI that night so they can choose whether they need to go disciplined classroom management route or reaching reluctant learners or whatever it may be. They have a menu of choices to be able to learn and then follow up with their mentor on campus. So, it's not just, "Check it off, I go to the training," but then their mentor will look at their application of it on their campus. So, we've built that in this year, and knowing that that's a gap that our teachers had last year, so we've built that in. But we've also built in after that a social experience for them. So, come December, they will have just a networking opportunity to decompress. They need those social, emotional pieces too. So, not only are we balancing professional development, but we're balancing supports because they need to be able to talk to someone, and they need to be able to have a system of support of colleagues that are in a similar place to them. So, those are some things that we're doing within the department to help account for those.
Right. And how highly involved is the ESE department in this upcoming professional development?
I believe they are also offering two sessions. We realize that just feedback, they are struggling with documentation. So, we're able to say, you know, they, they're really struggling. They're sitting with an IEP, and they don't have any clue on where to begin filling this out, and they're stressed. So, our department can give that type of feedback, but then their ESE specialist can also give feedback to say, "We're also noticing this." So, ESE is on board, professional development is on board, elementary and secondary, and then Mr. Ellers' department as well.
Targeted professional development.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's great. And I just want to add this a little bit because you mentioned it happened last year. Sometimes, especially if they probably, even if they have a teaching degree, or especially if they don't, if you could somehow get them before that first day of school, and they understand the importance of rules and procedures, rules and procedures, and can get that classroom management in that first time, because November, December, your class is gone and running with you. And so, if you could somehow figure out a way to get them in beforehand, just to, because if you have classroom management, and I know you know this, then your year's going to be a lot more smoother and better, and we won't have these, "Throw in a paper and I'm calling the dean." It will be, "Get over there, sit down," or let them throw their paper, and then find, you know, there's other ways to do that.
We did that for Great Beginnings this year. Mr. Ellers provided two of his deans because we broke apart the new teacher orientation for elementary and secondary, and we wanted someone who could speak to those tried and true experiences. And I believe both of the deans you provided were middle school?
We had a middle and an elementary. I think we did a secondary and elementary, if I remember correctly.
So, they were, they, you know, rooted in FEPS and classroom management structures. They were able to help present the content and facilitate conversations that are practical.
Yeah, and that just makes a whole difference. But I was lucky enough to have a teacher that didn't play, but my intern, and she taught me, one of, probably the best thing she ever taught me was classroom management.
That's true.
Yep, it is.
Okay. One last question. Will this training also include paras? Or if not, what do you have in mind for paraprofessionals?
For this, we're focusing on early career educators. So, that's another thing. We've realized that it's great to support our novice, six months of experience teachers or less, but in your first three years, we've realized that is also critical. So, that, for this purpose, is our intended audience. But I can talk to Ms. Horn and see as far as paraprofessionals, what opportunities we can have so it's targeted. The content and the development of content, we want it to be that lead instructor in the classroom, but there's absolutely a need for that, and I can talk with, speak with Ms. Horn and see if there are opportunities to create that same type of learning experience, targeted PD for our paras.
That would be wonderful because they're alone with the whole class of kids during, many times during the day.
Absolutely. So, paras, our paras learn side by side with our new teachers for Great Beginnings, and that was a really pivotal experience. But as we get into the strategies specifically for classroom management and ESE, we know that our new teachers, our early career teachers are struggling with some of, some of those aspects. So, absolutely, I'm going to, I will take that back to me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So, keeping that 3% to decrease for 20, for 1920 would be good. I'm assuming that the last two goals will be at 100% or...
I'm going to have John come up to help with that. With the youth mental health first aid, we need to be at 100% by June 30th, 2021 by statute. We were talking about a reasonable expectation this year of being at about a third. I'll let John talk a little bit about the ongoing piece that's going on with getting trainers trained to provide the training.
So, with mental health first aid, we, up until last week, we had six trained trainers in the district. And I'll just give you a brief overview of what that looks like. That is a five-day, full-day intensive training. Then on the last day, there's a written exam as well as a presentation, and you have to pass both to be certified trainer. From what Ms. Deckman told me when she was trained in Palacca several months back, a little, less than half of the cohort did not become certified. It's a very rigorous training. So, happy to say that last week, we had 14 of our staff members within the district go through a three-day training. They, they sent trainers down from Tallahassee, trained 14 people. All 14 people became certified. So, we went from six trainers in the district to 20. So, we were able to offer more and more sessions of this youth mental health first aid, which again is a six-hour face-to-face training. We have a, our schedule for November and December coming out for instructional staff members, and we're going to offer, I mean, numerous over those two months. So, our goal is averaging around 250 staff members a month. And in doing that, we will certainly meet our goal of 100% of employees by end of next school year, and theoretically, by Christmas of next year. And then we'll have six months, you know, spare, if you will, and then we'll start the cycle over because this is a three-year training, and then it expires for every employee. So, we have to retrain. So, throughout that process, we're going to obviously train more trainers and grow that, that pot of people so that we can then have even more and more offerings, and so we're not relying on the same 20 people every year.
Is the refresher the same number of hours?
It is. Yes, ma'am. As of now, unless that changes.
So, you think, so you think by June 30th of 2020, we might have about 40%?
It's, I mean, potentially. I mean, we have several hundred trained as of now.
So, I'd like to put a stretch goal on this so that we can try to attain that. So, if we say 40%, that may be a stretch, but at least we've got that goal there. And then, of course, the following year would be 100%.
Yes, it would have to be 100%.
Okay.
And the goal is with the trainers, again, they've, they've become certified trainers, and how we're asking those 14 people to go into another trainer session and observe what it looks like firsthand. Then they will train in pairs. We don't let them train solo at the beginning until they have two or three under their belt, and then they can become solo. So, then all of a sudden, we go from 10 offerings to 20.
20, yeah.
So, and it's a max of 35. So, unfortunately, we can't do, and I'll call on an auditorium, it's 35. Obviously, right now, with our largest group of being teachers, that's our target, but we will also begin working with certain departments, especially with certain unique situations of employees, like bus drivers or, you know, custodial staff. We're going to work with those departments to, to fit their needs. But right now, every offering will be for instructional staff.
Let me ask a question. Is this, is there anything built into new employees coming to the district? Can they get this immediately when they come in, instead of them starting the job? I guess like a new employee orientation, they go through that right off the bat.
So, we've thought about that, and I know a lot of other required information we do include in a new hiring orientation, but because this has to be a six-hour face-to-face, we can't do it in that traditional sense. One of the things the state has told us before is that they have an online, like, two-hour little module that we can use to kind of hold over, if you will, until we can get to those employees face-to-face, six-hour training, but they haven't released that. But once they do, we might be able to utilize that for that purpose. That can be kind of a new hire, very basic, until we do the face-to-face.
Because the bus drivers aren't being trained as of yet?
Not yet. Any, the, the sessions are open to anyone, so, and we're offering them at night, we're offering them on Saturdays, we're paying stipends, so they can certainly attend whenever they would like. There's no restriction that they can't, but we haven't specifically targeted them now, like, like we will in the future. So, for example, this past Monday, we had a session for district administrators that was, again, anyone could technically come, but that was just our target because what we like to do is that cohort of employees, keep them together just because they have similar experiences and et cetera, and it's just better kind of a training environment. But any session is open to anyone. It's the same training every single time.
Would it be possible to look at really encouraging our bus drivers and aides to get this training sooner than later because we're losing two or three a week? And their complaints are that they're just overwhelmed by behaviors.
Okay, absolutely. Yeah, we can push that out.
I would think putting some, putting some ownership on these department heads to kind of get their people into these trainings, you know, as soon as possible versus waiting. I mean, we, we got a little time, but that, that time will creep up on us real quick.
That's actually something we talked about at our directors' meeting this week with several of the department heads in doing that, and it's one of those things that you don't want to send all of your staff to one because then your office is empty, that type of thing.
No one to drive the bus.
We recycle those folks in and out.
Right.
We're all taking Uber today.
But yeah, so we can certainly get that out to them specifically. But so you know, we are having, again, six-hour training. So, one of the options we have is like a Tuesday, Wednesday night, three hours each, and then a Saturday. And obviously, any opportunity during the school year, for example, the in-service day yesterday, we were working with Ms. Mack here, we're going to try to train all middle school teachers in one shot. And then when the in-service day was, was changed, of course, we had to readjust. And so, any opportunity in the future we have like that, we're going to try to get large numbers there as well.
Because on the very positive side, I've heard nothing but fantastic feedback.
Heard very good feedback.
On this training and how valuable it is and how it really helps in terms of managing students, so, yeah.
I also want to just address the last, since, since I'm up here in regards to the multidisciplinary teams. I think there's two key words there, "established" and "trained." So, as of last year, approximately 5%, I would say that's probably accurate. Now, all schools do have an established MDT team. "Trained" is what we're working on, and we just got an update this morning. We've trained all but eight schools, which is, training means my team, David's team, have gone out there between an hour and a half in-depth training on the entire threat assessment protocol, suicide assessment protocol, in-depth with them, and we've gone to all schools but eight, and we're scheduling them.
So, that should be 100%. Let me ask you about that.
Absolutely.
What is the refresher on that? Do you have to go back out after a certain period of time and retrain again?
I, I know that we've pulled data, look at situations where we see paperwork that comes in that doesn't look like it met the fidelity of the implementation, and I've gone out and done one-to-one discussions with the principal or an APD. In fact, I'm heading to a place today about something. And again, it's, it's good intent, but they're having to learn this process.
Absolutely. So, once they have, though, I mean, I would, I would like to see us that once all this is done, just to continue to check to make sure that it's working well, what support do they need, and also if they have a lot of staff train over, turn over, we might. So, I would say that that needs to stay at 100%, but, but we'll look at next year, you know, yeah, what, what do we need to do to readdress to keep people up to date, I think would be what we'd want to do. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so let me see if I have Goal One. Ms. Thor, you want us to look at some para-training for classroom management? And you're right, if you can't do Domain Two, you can't get close to Domain Three. So, some para-training, Reverend Cummings, new employees, I think that's a great idea when they come in as part of, maybe if we could get everybody caught up, and then as a new person comes in, we could, that's six hours, so we'll probably need to chunk that out a little bit for someone new. And then I heard bus drivers too. So, but that's...
Bus aids.
And bus aids, I'm sorry. So, that's not really part of the strategic plan, but that's something that we need to check into and move forward. And Ms. McCall, I heard you say 40% for the mental health by 2020?
Yeah.
Or are y'all okay with that number at 40%?
I think it's, I think it's enough of a stretch goal.
John, you're okay with? And I do want to say, we got to get to train the trainers, then we have to train everybody, and then they gave us the 35 cap, so it's going to be slow-moving at first, but we are moving.
Yeah, but if we don't have a stretch goal there...
Right. So, we're going to put that goal as, and Rhonda, I'm writing this down, but you got it too, right? June 30th of 2020, 40% of our staff will be trained, and then Reverend Cummings, you want us to focus on, get our departments to focus on certain groups?
Right. At least sending a certain number every month or so.
Well, John sent four of his folks one day, and then left the other four, and then he'll send four more later, so, got it.
So, I'm sorry. How, how can we incorporate transportation into this goal? Because school-wide behavior management hits, custodial hits, cafeteria stuff.
Where you at, Ms. Thor?
I'm in Goal One, measures, provide a safe, orderly, and secure learning environment for students, teachers, and administrators. And then there's nothing about who gets our kids to school.
I think that you're exactly correct. Those are the first people that see them to set the tone.
And the last one at the end of the day.
Teachers, administrators, do you want to say, and staff, or do you want to say...
And all staff.
All staff, to get everybody?
And that includes our bus drivers. That includes everybody.
So, we'll say, "Learning environment for students, comma, teachers, comma, administrators, comma, and all staff." So we'll say learning environment for students, comma, teachers, comma, administrators, comma, and all staff.
I like that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Thor, because I was, I was sitting here thinking about it, but I don't think I was going to say it because it was one of those thoughts that went through my mind and out my other ear or my whatever, and I'm so glad you brought it up. Because it was, it must have gone out that way. So, because the bus drivers, if they set the tone early on, when the kids get to school, they're already on respect mode.
So let me look, let's look at the third one up from the bottom. The percentage of schools reported as unsafe or very unsafe by their teachers will be less than 50%. We'll be able to determine a little bit of that by that teacher survey. But actually, our goal should be 0%, correct?
Yeah, but remember, because we don't have any data, we're going to start with a baseline on that at 50. That was going to be our baseline data year with the survey.
Okay, but it looks like in 1819, we were at 9%.
I can comment on that a little bit.
So I just want to know where we need to put 1920. That's a huge discrepancy.
What happened with those numbers is, two years ago, a listening survey happened at the schools. I think Mr. Klimer went out, Mr. Curly, and I think Mrs. Beck went out. And they, they asked some specific questions. Last year, with the move towards the area directors, we didn't ask the questions in the same way. So what we did is went in to look at the safety rating questions on the principal survey as a data point. And so the numbers, really, we were comparing apples to oranges. So I think moving toward a standard set of questions that we ask on a survey that strictly deals with that will give us accurate baseline data. Because we really don't have, I, I don't know where that's going to fall this year with, and how, it depends on how we ask the question and set up the survey, but we've got to find out where we're at with our perception of teachers about school safety.
So then we need to keep that at 50% as the baseline until we have a good tool.
I would hope we come back significantly better than that. But I think as a target, it gives us a good place to look at the data, and then we set a goal for next year.
Okay, because that's not even, you can't even compare those two with what you said.
No, not at all.
Are we going to leave the 9% then? Because if some people, like, we know, but in a few years, they won't know. And they'll be like, oh, 50 or 9, and they're not going to know that we weren't comparing this.
I mean, yeah, we can.
I would. I feel better with that.
And then let's start with the 50%. Let's build that good tool. And then, then we'll, then we'll, then we'll be able to, on an annual basis, really tell.
Okay.
Are you, everybody good with that?
Yes, I'm great with that. Getting back to the buses. The, do we need another indicator that would say the percentage of school buses reported as safe were very unsafe by the, the drivers slash aides?
If you would like to do that, we can do that.
That's, I think that's a great, that's a great goal. Because I really do think so many of those problems start on the bus and goes right into the classroom.
Yes, ma'am, they do.
Yeah, been on the category.
And the bus drivers knowing that they, that they are being trained and they have the authority. They don't know what, I don't think they even know what they have the authority to do. And so it's, so they just quit. They just quit.
I think it can still go under the, the safe, orderly, and secure learning environment because that is part of the learning environment to get them to school.
The one thing I would suggest, just for usefulness of data, is we probably want to break bus drivers away from teachers. Because I think a key piece is what our teachers think about their school is a critically important piece.
But I think it can-
Two completely different environments.
But it can fall under goal one as a separate component.
Oh, yes. The kids are acting up. They're not safe.
Yeah, we're going to put it under the objective that's here. We'll just put it under, under the schools. We'll just add, we'll duplicate it, but put, we'll add another objective for school buses in particular, and it will go under the same goal.
Yes.
Good with that?
Yes.
And let's start with the baseline of 50%.
I remember Ms. King said 9%. That's not, that's not right. I remember saying, that's why we, in that last word, she said we were starting with 50% because you can't go from 50 to 9. So we obviously, so we'll put it, we'll put an NA at 9%.
And let's, let's put a target of 50% for our buses as well.
Got it.
Okay. That'll help us keep bus drivers, probably.
Well, it'll trigger training, too.
Okay, do we need, do you want me to recap goal one, or we're all, we're in a good place?
We're good with one.
All right.
We're blazing right along.
Goal two, this is the fun stuff.
All right, so.
So this is, and Reverend Cummings, this was your suggestion to move goal two, or I think we put academics at goal two. That safety is one, and academics is goal two. So here, we took the last year's data, we added three to it. And you see the goals if you look at the first one. So we'll just pick on fourth grade from 44. That meant that cohort was 44. We added three to it for 47. The question that we talked about a little bit that we didn't really come to a consensus on was the third grade ELA. That's why if you look at that very last page, you can see we've been hovering around, but we just, we took the year's data and we left it the same for third grade. That's, again, the baseline. We just don't have a real way to indicate that. Ms. King asked, and you said, hey, can we see the state? So if you look at the state and ELA for third grade, you'll see 58%. We're not close to that right now. We're at 44% right now. So I think if, if we leave the 44 until we get those K2 kids coming up to us, I think that's appropriate. The rest of it is based off actual data from our students. We just don't have a way. And I asked John, I said, is there a true indicator we could look at from second grade to third grade? It's just apples and oranges. It's really difficult to predict. So that's why we have that 44% there. Everything else, just took the data we made and we added three to it.
So the appendix A is a really good, and because we've got the state goal.
Yeah, this is, this is for Mr. James. This is for Mr. James. Here's his balance scorecard, right there.
All right.
And Ms. Stacy, again, if you just look on that far side, yes or no? Did we meet it? Yes or no? Real simple. And, and what we hope this is, if a community person actually went online to look at this, they could say, hey, we did or we did not meet the goal.
Yep. Okay. So based on this information on appendix A, so do we want to take the, the, what we made was the 44%. I'm looking at, at third grade. Do we want to stay at our 3% increase across the board?
Well, see, Ms. McCall, you're talking about for the incoming third graders?
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the 1819. Those-
Are you talking about that, that fourth grade cohort for, for next year?
Next year.
Yes, so we did. We added that to 47. So see, if you look at the fourth grade, we took the ELA for third grade, and we put it at fourth grade, and we added three of that for 47.
So.
The goal for the fourth graders for next year, for 1920, which is actually this year, we're getting all kinds of confused now.
I know.
It's 47%. We took the cohort, bundled up the fourth grade, and added three. And let me give you just some data. So 3% is appropriate right now. Once you cross that 60%, 60% threshold, 3% is kind of lofty. But until we catch up with the state, 3% is the, is the bare minimum we should be looking at. But that is, that is appropriate.
Does the state move the cohorts?
They do. When they compare apples to apples.
Okay, that's what I wanted, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah, they, they look at the, I asked that question.
Okay.
And they do look at, they track the cohorts.
Yes, ma'am, they compare. And they got all kinds of different ways to look at their data. I mean, they got tons and tons of people doing that stuff.
So this year's third graders scored 44% on ELA.
So they're currently fourth grade for right now.
So that fourth grade cohort will be 47%.
And so let me just give you two pieces. That's actually moving up, moving up in academic grade, which fourth grade is much more difficult, and still asking them to increase 3%. So that is a, there's a huge learning difference between third grade and fourth grade. And then again, between fourth and fifth, but we're still staying true to the, the 3%.
So then, those fourth graders that met goal, then they would be at 52%.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're getting close with that.
We're, we're sneaking up that way.
Okay. So does that make sense to everybody?
Oh, yeah.
And remember, this has nothing to do with growth. This is all proficiency.
Proficiency. We get it.
You got to get to where we are proficient. Well, we know growth's great, but this is about proficiency. Are you where you're supposed to be?
Okay. That's what you take to the bank.
That's your check. That's right, Ms. Stacy. So if you want to, we've done this a, a little bit, but everything's been taken. So you can see the cohorts, the second page, and on page six, you start seeing some sixth-grade data.
Page six?
Yes, ma'am. You start seeing your middle school data there. And again, we just added 45 to 48. We've taken the cohorts and added three all the way through. So that's our goals.
Okay.
And I do think adding that state column makes us see our, our big-picture goal, where we need to get to and pass.
So prior to putting this on our website, we will, do we want to keep the 1718, or do we want to go 1819 and now 1920? What the 1920 goal is.
Now, I want to see the past goals.
Yeah, I remember, and we, remember I asked about 1516? You said leave that too. So we still have 1516 data.
Okay.
And then until you tell us to wash it, it'll be there until, and I don't know if it should be taken off. It just gives us historical data.
So the, the 1920 goal will be added.
Yes, ma'am. So let me, Ms. McCall, you mentioned that. So after you approve this at the board meeting, then Kevin is going to take it to his folks, his company, and he's going to get it all, I'm going to say, prettied up and put it on the website. But this is the, this meat and potatoes, and he's going to do the icing on it when we're ready to go.
Just as long as we, they can see what our goal for 1920 is, so the public can see that we're not flatlining.
Remember, that, that appendix A is going to help them see the trends, and then we'll have the goals there, too.
Yes. Are we, are we able to give an explanation? Kevin, this is a question for you. I think it looks very good and easy to follow when we do the cohorts in a color so that they know that our sixth graders in 1516, then they're yellow and six, we know that that's the same group of kids. I think that would make it so easy for the public to understand, especially if we did an explanation.
Yeah, a little key.
A little key. So, because, because if we don't have that key, they're not going to understand the cohort that we're following these kids as they move through the grades.
We'll do a little asterisk at the bottom of the graph and then say, this is what, how it works. And we'll do like a follow-the-arrow kind of, so people can understand.
Yes. I just, I think for the general public, that will help.
Got you. We'll put that on this, and then we'll put it on the website once we're ready. Just a little brief, I guess, explanation of that.
I mean, I think you got it. You have it right here on page nine where it's just, you're following the colors.
Yeah, you can see it. We just want to make sure you understand what they- So we'll do an example of an arrow pointing down each grade level, like, for maybe 1516 until they get to middle school, so you can see what we're doing.
Like a legend on a-.
Yeah.
Right.
So I'm thinking that the 1920 goal should be after the goal met column.
So let me take you back to that, the last, the appendix, Ms. McCall?
Yeah.
There is no goal there. These are just what we've done. This is trends. This is how we've scored. So the goal is in the, in the, too, you want it at the end as well. So we're showing you, this is data. This is how we performed. The goal is something totally separate. So if you look at, I'll just pick a page and we'll look at a goal. Yeah, look at page seven. If you look at eighth grade, this is science from 44 to 47. There's your goal. This appendix is just data of how we performed.
Okay.
So the goal is the 3% increase.
Right, so it's two separate things. This is performance data, is this appendix. The goal is what we intend to do. So next year, we'll just put, well, again, the data, and then we'll change the goal. So if you want to, if you want us to try to clean up and have an appendix B or an appendix A for the goals, we can certainly do that. That wouldn't be hard to do. I just don't want to mix the two. It's two different data points.
Right.
I just, I would like the public to see for our strategic plan that we're shooting that-
So are you talking, for the academic portion only, would you like for us to come up with something very similar to the appendix A? And we can actually have a goal sheet?
Yeah, that's what I want to do.
Something totally separate, that's easy to read. So we'll do, we'll do this, McCall, we'll do, Ms. McCall, we'll do 1819, and then we'll do 1920 goal, side by side, so you can see it. Is that fair?
Yeah. I like the, did we meet the goal? So I think it's important that our community-
But remember, when we chose the data, we're not, that's for last year. So we, we went down. We chose this was our 44, so. And I'll let you look at it if you want.
So as long as we can show the 1920-
Goal somewhere simplified, you're okay with that.
And then, then coloring the cohorts so they-
Yes, ma'am. Got that.
I'm just, I'm just trying to think of, of somebody that has never seen our strategic plan before.
Right.
And that goes to the academic data, data, and that they're able to get a good picture of what we're trying to do in the strategic plan.
If you just say, here, look at this, you can see it and get it pretty.
They would, they could, they could have-
Yes, ma'am.
A pretty good idea without asking a lot of questions. And I, I think that's, you know, one of the things we tend to do in education is make things very difficult for the general public to really understand. And with this, I really want them to be able to look at it and, and see what are our goals, what are the objectives, and then how are we going to, how are we getting there?
So we're going to do the academic measures in appendix A, and then appendix B will be our 1920 goals, right behind that.
After each year, we will still show whether we met that goal for that year.
Yes, ma'am.
So then each year, they can see hopefully more lies than ends.
Yes, yes. And taking a step further, in that goal column, there's, there's 20 goals. And so I just added up the nose, which was 15, and divided it by the number, which was 20, and we're at 75%. So right now, we're a solid C in our goal meeting. So-
District-wide.
District-wide. So that might give them-
I want to tell you how this trickles down to.
It'd be pretty cool.
In proficiency.
Yes.
After we have a strategic plan, after we're done with this, we're going to take this to the school level as well. And I'm just going to pick a school. Eighth Street's right behind us. Your students performed at 58% in the ELA third grade. Your goal is now 61. So we're going to take this to another level because this should be the breadth and life of this district.
Right.
And it's going to be a school-level thing. When the area directors do their evaluations, that's going to help inform their decisions.
And, and continuing with the 3%.
Right.
And this year, it looks like we were at 75%. Hopefully, by next year, we'll be at 78%.
Well, I just use that same example. You know Eighth Street performs high. You still got to reach your 3% goal.
Well, yeah.
You can't be stagnant. You got to still grow. So we're going to use that-
Overall as a snapshot for the district, that would be very easy for the public to understand.
I, I agree. And I think that is, that is one of our, our goals, is to let the public know.
How we're really doing.
How we're really doing.
Well, again, I'm saying, I think-
Yeah, I want to know, too, because you had, you said you had 15 yeses?
No, 15, 15 no's and 20 total.
All right, I thought you said.
I don't come to 75%.
Yeah.
I hope I did.
25%.
25.
Yeah, that's, right.
Oh, maybe I read them wrong.
No!
You got to go, you try-
Yeah, five divided by 20.
You got to go the other way.
Yeah.
25%.
20.
25% goals, ma'am.
I don't know. I thought that looked high.
I was like-
It sounded good. It sounded good.
You're late around.
Sounded really good. As eternal optimist.
You're ESE on math. There you go. Check my math. I'll talk to you about ESE.
Is that what you want? You want that, Ms. McCall?
I think that makes sense.
25% for an F. Aren't you sorry you said that?
Everybody good with goal two? Yeah, let's do goal three.
I love a positive board member.
Goal three, finance. We did what you asked. We cleaned everything up. Ms. Thor, I was ignorant to some of the questions you asked, and now we have the expert, Ms. Boston Ellis. You asked about the furniture allocation. We currently do have a furniture allocation. We've kind of made it a little better, though. We are going to have the area directors, Mr. McHale, Ms. Beck, they're going to come up with a kind of a rotation on how you go through furniture, who needs what. Currently, we do $50,000 annually. There's going to be a, you spend the $50,000, and we reload it for the schools based off need for furnitures, for furniture in the school. So we do already have it. I didn't know that. It's $50,000 a year that we do. If the area directors say it's not enough, we might need to come to Teresa and beg her to bump it up. But right now, it's $50,000. So you ask for a finite amount, and that's what we've been doing in the years past, is $50,000.
So I guess it's just a matter of making sure that it's getting to the classrooms for, like, replacing the, the lab tables or whatever it is the classroom needs that are covered with graffiti and have three legs.
And Amelia does now. And that's not fair to her to try to do that for all the schools and all the districts. So we're going to put the area directors and some other folks to meet with the principals and APs to talk to teachers and see what they need. And you said science tables at what school did you say specifically?
North Marion Middle.
I thought it was North Marion Higher Middle, so we'll check in on that, too. But we do have a budget that's already been allocated. We just, I just don't think it's been spent appropriately because it's just too much going on in Amelia's shop, in my opinion.
So we might want to define needs versus wants.
You got three legs, and you're supposed to have four. That's a need.
So needs versus wants, and we, we would love our classrooms to be at 100% of all needs and all wants, but we have-
You know, Mr. McHale, he does not like spending money, so if he lets him spend money, it will be a need. I can promise you so. How'd it get you, Mr. McHale? Okay, finance questions. Anything for finance? And if you do, I'm going to bring them up as soon as you ask one question because I don't know anything about finance, what they're doing.
So just on the breakfast program and the lunch program, do we, do we always keep like a 1%? I mean, is that pretty to increase it by 1%? So is she pretty, are they, she pretty good at-
It's so high, too. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Questions for goal three?
Just keep winning those awards, Ms. Boston Ellis, and we'll be close to counting.
Okay, goal four. That was a fun conversation we've had. We cleaned all that up. So if you look at page 19 on goal, goal four. So, if you look at page nineteen on goal, goal four, we kept things similar, but we did change the multi-race, or the two races, we did five persons, 'cause we could not do a percentage, remember, we had that conversation? And that still is a lofty goal, but that is a goal we have, and then we'll address that again in July, if that's something we wanna keep going. But we still have the one percent, the one percent, which means the white will drop by two percent. I do wanna bring your attention to page twenty. This is something, Ms. Ower, you were talking about, I think, Ms. King, you said something, we're trying, and Reverend Combs, we're trying to recruit teachers, future teachers, so we're actually gonna go to the high schools and start recruiting high school seniors and juniors to make teaching a profession. You did ask about national board certification. We don't currently have a way to track that, but we're going to figure that out. We don't have it tracked in Employment Services, but we're going to find out. I think what, if we paid you that much you were, so we're, we're trying to do some research, 'cause I remember that was a concern you had, so we're gonna try to find a way to kind of encapsulate how many nationally board-certified teachers we have, 'cause we do not know right now. Nobody has that number, but we'll get it to you.
The only ones that I remember aren't here anymore.
That's what I'm saying, it's just kind of been, how long ago was that? Eight years, maybe? So, we're, we're trying to find a way to know who is.
And then, are we going to offer something to help those that want to become nationally certified?
We are, but that's gonna cost money, which means that's gonna have to be a conversation with Teresa, and where we, and grants and that kind of stuff, but, yes, ma'am, we can.
She's not here, so we can ask for it.
Yeah, ask for everything, now she just left.
I'm trying to remember how we did it last.
I'm pretty sure it was grants that we got from the federal government, I believe if that's, we got money as a pass-through to us, we didn't ever generate things out of the general fund, if I had to guess, but I will find out. We just don't have a record of, of who is and who's not, even.
I think so. They had to pay for part of it, didn't they?
Yeah, they had to pay for a piece of it, too. It was kind of expensive for a teacher.
Oh, it was very expensive, yeah.
It was.
I don't know if then they got reimbursed, if they passed.
If they passed, they got their money back, but the money up front was, I remember being quite a lot.
Right, made it challenging.
Okay, so, human capital, we've cleaned that up, and we're still recruiting, Reverend Combs is working with us on a task force to, to recruit minorities into education, but also into administration as well. You can see the data on twenty-one, page twenty-one. And remember, we were gonna compare the student demographic data, so that's why you see the nineteen, twenty, that's, that is not Marion County demographics, we do not wanna mirror Marion County, we wanna mirror the student, the schools. So, if you look, you'll see, it's seventy-eight point five-two is white, forty-eight point nine percent is white, so we're not matching, so that's always gonna be our, just like that state goal, we're trying to get to that. And a one percent increase doesn't seem like, that's a lot of people, but we're, if we steadily grow, like we did this year, we'll get there. Any questions on goal four?
None.
Goal five? That is Kevin, and he cleaned up his piece of it, too. And remember, Kevin's trying to get baseline data for most of his stuff, too, 'cause this is so new to our district, and he is doing a great job, if y'all all know that.
There's so much more information now available on the, the website, and there's so much more information now that's being disseminated out to the public, after a lot of years, I really noticed that difference.
Yep. And you know Kevin wins awards left and right, y'all know that, too, just as Teresa does.
Well-earned.
Yes. Anything for goal five? And then, goal six is technology. We've simplified and cleaned that up like you asked us to do, and we're measurable as best we can be for, for that, that was your concerns, Ms. McCall.
Yep. And everybody will be happy to know, I checked my work and I found my error. I counted up the, the nos instead of the yeses.
You did it backwards.
Let Ms. Stacy do the math, she's good, she's got the math.
So, we're gonna shoot for seventy-five percent.
Good.
We knew where you were.
I just, I just have a question for Anthony.
Sure.
When it comes to replacements and getting Chromebooks and things into schools, do we have a schedule for that?
Basic schedule. Yes, we look at what's expiring, so every year, when I come to you and I talk about our technology plan, we calculate the number of devices that needs to be replaced.
Okay.
However, the manufacturer at times could change when certain devices might be able to get updates.
Okay.
So, we, we're always constantly looking at that.
Okay.
What's the, what's the, the life of a?
So, for a, a Windows desktop computer, we've actually had devices for six to eight years, right? And Chromebooks, they have a warranty of three years, but we can get, you know, three to five years out of them, we've, we've had them probably now for five to six years, so we're getting close to having to refresh some. But, like anything else, the, the more, the cheaper the device is, the consumer, the quality, the life cycle's gonna be shorter than the more expensive devices that we've purchased in the past. But we went with Chromebooks so that we can give more devices out to students.
What's the lifespan of Apple?
Good question.
Longer.
We don't manage those, but they've seemed to be around for a very long time, as well as the, the six to eight years, but with anything else, as technology improves, there's certain functionality you're not gonna get, and eventually, those machines slow down, and then they can't run the latest applications. So, over time, the life cycle catches up with us.
Do all of our schools have Chromebooks now, either in classrooms or?
Correct, yes.
All right. Are they, are they Chromebooks for every classroom, or are they Chromebooks on carts that they check out, or, or all of the above?
All Chromebooks at all schools are, have a cart associated with them, unless they're being used for special, in special areas where they don't need a cart. In some schools, each class might have a Chromebook cart dedicated to that classroom, and others, they share carts between classrooms.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Say good with technology?
Yeah.
So, I think, this is it, Ms. McCall, so you should be happy.
I am so happy, great.
We'll bring this to the board November twelfth, Rhonda, is that when it comes for approval? November twelfth meeting, after y'all approve it, then we'll give it to Kevin with all the revisions we made, we'll do this today, this week, and we'll put it on our website, and then we'll bring this up again in July with the measurable, so maybe it'll just be a way of work from this point forward. But, these folks in this room, and Rhonda did a ton of work, so it, it's done, thank the good Lord, it's done.
So, once it's updated, could you get it to Mr. Gibbs so that he can get it out to all of us, just so we have eyes? I know it'll be on the agenda, and we can go into board docs.
I'll, I'll just have Rhonda shoot it to y'all directly, and she's done.
But I, I'd like to see the completed product.
Yes, ma'am. We're gonna change the, to the forty percent, we're gonna change everything and get it all done, and then we'll shoot it to y'all.
Thank you, Dr. Grantham, and your staff, because this was a lot of work.
It's a lot of work, but it's very workable.
Make sure that you understand what's coming to you on the twelfth is the content. It's not the design.
Okay, yes.
Because the design is gonna take, we already have it in design, but we've gotta go back and reformat some things.
And when, just, do you have a clue when that might be up?
I would say, at least a month after you approve content, so early December.
Okay, okay.
That's fair, it's enough time.
So, then, moving forward, Kevin, that would be after we do this on an annual basis, then just updating the current format.
All the hard work happens right now.
Okay, and then it's just updates after that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Take your time and do it good. Don't rush. All right, so, board, do we have any questions?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment? And then, all right, board, do we have any comments or concerns? Ms. Stacy?
I do. Okay, I've done, I've been working with the, Mr. Gibbs, and doing a lot of research on some things, and I'd like to remind the board, this is very important, one I'm gonna talk to you about, okay? State statute is very clear, we are fiscally responsible for this district. What I'm about to suggest probably should have already been in place, but previous school boards kind of allowed the tail to wag the dog over the years. As I went through what I'm about to talk about, I saw we have many of the superintendent, and I mean, that's, that's fine, superintendent designees that looks at, looks at contracts, purchase orders, and that sort of thing, they're not really trained in contracts and, and getting the contracts in line. And I suggested an idea to Mr. Gibbs, and he said it probably should be in place regardless of who the superintendent is, and probably should have already been in place before now. But I'd like to alert the board to what I believe is an emergency situation. I recently did a records request for contracts signed by the superintendent for two thousand eighteen and nineteen, and nineteen and twenty school years. I received approximately one hundred and eleven contracts. From my review, which I worked with the legal department, I have several concerns. Terry was very, very helpful going with me through each of the contracts to help me see where we were, and what's the history here. What we found is that the superintendent's designees may be authorizing staff to exceed the superintendent's authorized threshold limit without confirmation that the staff amended the contract, and without follow-up confirmation that the school board was ever notified that the threshold amount was exceeded on our next board agenda. Sometimes we found out, but it was maybe a month or two later. And that the superintendent's designees are authorizing staff to proceed with purchases, approximately nineteen times that I've found, without contracts or data-share agreements. And these purchases are something that should have been reviewed by our school board attorney to determine if a contract or data-share agreement was necessary before the purchases were made. For example, I'll just give you one, we, an item that we spent twenty or twenty-one thousand dollars on, as best as I can tell. There was no data-share agreement, this contract was, there was actually probably not even really a contract, it's more a purchase order type thing, we can't really find how the contracts were even clearly made, it's kinda like, they just order things. One thing is the Florida Certified Nursing Assistant application. This can be done online, or this form can be filled out. The first question is candidate information, their social security number. No data-share agreement? Our students are being asked to put out their social security number on this computer program with no data-share agreement with this company, and does Pearson remind us of anything with what happened to them, with them? You know, we've had some breaches. In four of the nineteen instances, one set of purchases exceeded the superintendent's limit but was later brought to the board's attention, one set of purchases exceeded the superintendent's limit, but I was unable to locate where it was ever brought to the school board for approval, and in two instances, the approved names were so vague, no one would be able to even determine what the entity was actually approved, as we went into Skyward looking for this, some of it, we just couldn't even really identify. Also, that the school board does not have a formal policy that actually even sets guidance or a speeding, spending limit for the superintendent. There's not really, it's, it's just, there's just this amount of thirty-five thousand, it's super vague, it doesn't talk about emergency items or anything, it's just, there it is, boom, there's no guidance. That's our fault. I would like to recommend that we ask our school board attorney to create an emergency policy amendment to Board Policy seven point seven oh, that requires all expenditures up to thirty-five thousand dollars to be approved by the superintendent, together with the school board chair or vice chair. So, if it's an emergency item, we can always get ahold of the, Mr. Gibbs can always get ahold of the board chair or vice chair to kind of look at the contract, make sure that everything's, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, because we are finding many contracts, we, some of them, we don't even have contracts on, it just looks like purchase orders, it's just, it's like, it's, it's kind of like a mess. This would require the authorization of the school chair and vice chair, or vice chair to have approval level access in Skyward. Right now, they have no access. It will allow the board the opportunity to know what other items are being purchased, if we have Skyward access, and will assure that the staff is not circumventing the contracting process or board approval. Currently, if the school board denies a purchase over thirty-five thousand, this is crucial, what I'm about to tell you here, if the school board should deny a purchase over thirty-five thousand dollars, there is nothing to prevent staff from reducing the cost to below thirty-five thousand and making the purchase using the superintendent's authority, okay? Then, when they exceed thirty-five thousand dollars, staff can merely get a designate to authorize it, and the board may or may not ever even be made aware of this, except through a generic report of the district's monthly expenditures. So, Mr. Gibbs, if you have any questions, Mr. Gibbs and I, we've spent extensive time together on all these contracts, and I'm sure he can help you if you have any questions about this, but what I'm proposing, that, for consensus, to request our school board attorney to draft a resolution updating our grant of authority to the superintendent on purchasing, to require the board chair to sign, or vice chair, to sign all contracts within the superintendent's thirty-five thousand dollar authorization, and this will be done for sixty days, this is a, an authorization for sixty days, and have the resolution paid, and have this resolution placed on the Tuesday agenda for good cause, based on the facts I just recited. Also, I would ask for a consensus that we ask, also, I would ask for a consensus that the attorney start rulemaking on an amendment to the purchasing policies to implement this requirement. So, in other words, we can do this through a resolution, and it gives us sixty days while we go through rulemaking, and, and then it can be amended, so that, in the future, this school board can say that fiscally, we know what's going on in this district, and anything that the, the vice chair looks at, or the school board attorney says, wait, we can't sign that yet, we don't have a data-share agreement, we don't have what we need, the template's not properly filled out, or we just say, or the board chair says, I don't agree with this, then it can go to the full board. If it's not an emergency item, it's not textbooks, or test preps, or something like that, then it can go to the full board for approval, up or down. But this would be a, this would be a, a preparation for, to stop the tail wagging the dog that's happened in this district for so many years, where the school board actually, because we're kind of the last ones to hear a lot of things that's been purchased, bought, and we don't even know anything about it, it's kind of, kind of looks, it makes us look like just a rubber stamp. But I would like for some discussion about this, about the possibility of the school board attorney drafting this resolution, and it would just update our grant of authority on purchasing for this, the vice chair or the chairman would be contacted, come down, look at this, and give it a thumbs up or thumbs down, how do y'all feel about that?
Well, I'm, I need to do a little bit of my own research, I'm not willing just to jump into something without really doing some research myself, so I, I can't go with an, with a resolution right now. If we have a problem, I wanna figure it out, but I really, but I, but I need to, you know, read this whole policy, I need to talk to some folks and, and see how things are working, and I, I'm not comfortable just jumping into something. If we need it, then, then, yes, I would be willing, but I don't, I never just jump into anything, I always try to do a little research, so I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay, I am comfortable, if we, if you could send that resolution so we could read it, I do.
I haven't drafted any resolution.
Oh, nothing is yet? Can you do it that quick?
I can probably get it done by tomorrow, and bring it to the work session, if you want it by tomorrow.
Because I do know, and you guys have been on that board, where I brought things to you that was finally presented, that took months before, that we had no idea, and it is concerning that, you know, designees can sign, or decisions could be made, and then they come before us and just ask for forgiveness, even though they know what their statute is, and I think at this time, it would be wise for us to protect ourselves and our, And I think at this time, it would be wise for us to protect ourselves and our district, so that's where I stand, I don't know where you, Nancy and Eric.
Well, Nancy says, thank you for the work that, the extensive work that you've put into this and to bring it to our attention. I would want to know how other districts are handling this, and if they already have a policy in place to address this, it would certainly help us in mirroring something similar. The last thing we want to do is have things brought to our attention after they're already a done deal, that's not the spirit of what this is supposed to be about. So, anything that's going to enhance that communication is something that I would be all for.
Right now, I believe that it is in an emergency situation, where we're right here at the data-share agreement issues, and I'm seeing, I'm seeing stuff right now that, I mean, it's nice to say manana's a good thing, and we have to, I believe that that's what we hire our school board attorney for, to advise us, and then we can take what he says and go from there. So, Mr. Gibbs, how do you feel about?
Personally, I don't think there's a problem, I don't think it's a bad idea necessarily to have that sign. It does keep at least one member of the board if they're signing everything, that way, that person knows. It doesn't change the authority, it's 35, all you have to do is reach out to the chair and say, hey, we have a set of contracts that need to be executed.
And that way.
It doesn't have to go to an agenda, the board chair is just coming by whoever it is, and there.
Nothing would change, really.
There is that board.
A check.
It's the board knowledge that is there.
And where, I don't like to get caught with my, I don't want to get caught in my pants now, where I'm ankles. And people saying that we knew something that we did not know, or it, somebody needs to know. And basically, that's what this is saying, that somebody's wanting to know, and we won't get blindsided with anything.
Right, this does not take any of the $35,000 approved limit away. Things can still be done without full board approval, it's just that, at that time, it would be, if it's 111 in two years, it would be a trip down here for the board chair once a week or something, possibly to look at something, and let Mr. Gibbs look at the contract and make sure it was properly executed. It's not like a whole lot of extra stuff.
You're just saying another set of eyes from the board looking at it.
And the board already meets with Mr. Gibbs anyways, like every year.
But if vocational education, if they needed test preps for one of our certificate things or something, and it's something that really needs to get ordered, which is kind of what happens sometimes, we heard Mark come before us, boom, board chair, board vice chair comes down, lets Mr. Gibbs look at it, because right now, I can tell you something, when I went through these, Mr. Gibbs had never seen any of them. No eyes, well, but I mean, of the ones I'm talking about now, the ones I just talked about.
We're not restricting.
Not restricting.
Not be restricting.
No. Still has the same authority, it's just extra eyes on it.
Because I don't want, I don't want, I don't want people, I don't want us to get in the habit of trying to stifle.
Nope, nothing changes.
People from doing their job, people need to do their job.
Nothing changes at all, it's just that.
And people need to be accountable for the job they're doing, and if this is just gonna give us another set of eyes so that we can all stay in compliance, I'm about to stay in compliance. I don't want us to be tying folks' hands.
Is it really about extra eyes, or is it about the flow of the work, the logical flow of the work, and who should be seeing what before it's approved, that's my question.
Mr. Gibbs should know what's coming out of here, he should know. I mean, we are the fiscal managers of this district, and our school board attorney should know. It won't change anything, I mean, for future superintendents or anything, just to have the school board attorney just kind of look to see what the appointed superintendent or whatever, whoever is ordering, to make sure that the contracts are in order, because many of these were not in order.
And we do have, we do have instances where, and I believe we have, was it a nursing agreement, Paul? Or what was it, where they absolutely would not sign our contract, but we had to have?
We've had instances where, yeah, they just won't do changes, and we usually not approve it, and it comes to the board and you guys decide, and that can still happen. If it's within the super threshold, I issue those, not approved all the time, and we say, you have to go to the superintendent and ask for permission for the approval, so I mean, the process wouldn't change.
I don't want us to stop the flow of business.
Nothing would change.
I want our programs, just like with the CTE incident that happened, you know, those kids need to be working towards certification, and we didn't have what we needed. And I want to be sure that we're not going to stifle. The flow and what needs to be done. And I would be curious, again, I'm not, I don't do anything on a reactive basis, I like to do my research, I'd be interested in knowing what other counties do for their superintendent's limit, on what she has to spend before approval, or how that works. Every, all superintendents have some type of discretionary that they can go up to, and I don't want to.
That's not gonna change, that won't change at all.
Right, that's the same, we're just paying attention, we're protecting ourselves, and I think
We're just protecting this.
We're at a place where we need to.
And I don't, I don't have a problem with that, but I just don't like to be reactive about it. I'd like to get the facts, I'd like to know what other counties are doing. I'd like to know, Neola's going through our policies now, what do we need to do with the policies to be sure that we have controls in place?
And is there already a Neola policy that addresses?
Exactly.
Again, for me, it comes back to what is the logical way to be organizing the flow of the business to keep us as a fiscal agents completely in the know and in the loop, and doing what we're elected to do. And I will say that I rely, would rely heavily on your input for this, and obviously, you've identified some things, so.
I can tell you, Neola currently, as it is, just gives a blanket, just like we have now, they have up to this amount, and after that, it has to go to the board, there is no secondary, the board needs to see it. So, that's the current Neola policy. It is what we have right now, it just.
There's just times when we need attorney representation, I mean, we need, we need to make sure that these.
Right now is the time.
Right now's the time, we need.
We need to be very cautious.
Absolutely, nothing changes, except that when a contract goes out of here, we know that it's covered with Mr. Gibbs.
But every time you do something, there are changes that happen, and what are those changes? And will it stifle the business that needs to happen? Those are my questions, I'm not saying that I don't, that I disagree with being sure that the board has knowledge and that we have controls in place, but I am saying that we need to be sure that when we do something, that we understand what the changes will be, and are there consequences to the changes? And I'm just, I'm never one to be reactive, so I won't, I can't go along with this until we, not that it's wrong, but I need, I need a little more information.
Okay, I also, my thoughts are also on this, that there is no other county in this state of Florida that is in the position that this school board is currently in. And me personally, at this point, I'm okay walking solo to make the right decisions for our district. But I would like to see the resolution and stuff like that, I just, again, I think it's important that we are very cautious, we're protective over our board, and, you know, in a couple of years, if we want to revisit it, we can, but I think right now, Miss Stacy came forward with an excellent proposal, in my opinion, and I do believe we have a consensus. Mr. Gibbs, if you can write that, and we can move forward.
Bring it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all right, and our meeting is adjourned at 10:47 a.m.